The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The Board will now enter into executive session. For the Fledge of Allegiance? Aye.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so at this time. Want to introduce Faith Abernathy this morning. Good morning Faith, how are you? Faith is President of the Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County. And we also have Anna Loflin with us. Good morning Anna, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. Moving right along, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Board reports. We'll start with you.
Thank you. I'd just like to give an update about the student body, things happening within that. Tomorrow, we have an upcoming SMASK General Assembly meeting at Great Mills High School. Some highlights of this meeting will be the individual schools breaking out into groups and planning their SMART goals for the year with upcoming events that they want to do, things that they want to try to achieve this year. We did that last year and it was a really great way to make your agenda for the whole year. Additionally, an upcoming service project that we plan to do is Harvest for the Hungry.
All right, Serita. Serita, thank you very much. Mrs. Crosby?
I just thought of something that I wasn't going to mention, but I think it's important. My granddaughter spent the weekend with me and she was all excited because she was going to go to a museum Monday. And they were going to the Museum of Natural History. I remember that so well because every time anybody important came to town, and I put that in quotes, Mom would take them downtown to the museums. And I don't think, the air and space wasn't originally there, but it's there now. The second thing is, I went to a fundraiser for the, I guess, at the Blue Crabs is the name of the baseball team. And I told a little boy there that was playing with my other granddaughter that I've been going to ball games my entire life and I'm 68 years old. Sixty-eight, might as well say it. And I had not yet gotten a ball. Well, he knew how to get up close to the edge, you know, where they are, the dugout and everything. And they threw my granddaughter a couple balls, actually, the players did. Well, the young man got a ball and he came over to me and I said, "Oh, good, we'll give this to my other granddaughter." And he says, "No, we won't." He says, "You've never gotten a ball, here's your ball." And his name was Alex and he goes to Leonardtown Elementary School. What a nice, nice little boy I met.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. We've been doing homework at home. It's, we've been enjoying it, but Maddie's had a project where she comes home every night and she has to keep track of the phases of the moon. Five o'clock this morning, the alarm went off because of the blood moon tonight. So, we were out on the pier, five o'clock this morning, snapping pictures, completing her homework assignment. I had one good picture. I don't have a lens like that. If I did, I probably could have seen the flag on the moon. We had a good time. Maddie's enjoying it. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. On Saturday, I attended the fifth annual Chopticon High School Showcase of Bands. Eight bands participated, including, of course, Chopticon, Great Mills, and Leonardtown High School. Now, Chopticon High School, just for some facts, this is their fifth consecutive state champion for the 2013-14 season. They are third place in U.S. Bands National Competition for 2013 and 2014, and they were the 2012 national champions. It was a terrific day to spend a Saturday afternoon with outstanding marching band performances. Many thanks go to the principal, Mr. Bowden, the band director, the band boosters, the hospitality fundraiser, chaperones, pit crew, trailer towing, and the uniform helpers. It was a wonderful event and a beautiful day of entertainment. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Last week, I attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Fall Conference. I have, for the last two years, been privileged to co-chair that event. And thankfully, as a past president, my conference registration is covered by MAB, so the cost of the school system is minimal. The session this year was particularly interesting. Back in February, the Chair of the Black and Hispanic Caucus asked, after I had spoken about some of the programs we have in St. Mary's County that address a myriad of issues, specifically student achievement for all students, and asked if I would be willing to present at the conference this year. And it turned out to be a two-hour session. And I went to Dr. Marterano and I laid out what the request was and never one to shy away from talking about some of his favorite programs that are so successful. He absolutely said, "Let's do it." Fast forward to the summer when he announced that he would be leaving us, I suddenly was struck by, "Well, now, what would be my backup for presenting?" And thankfully, for Mr. Smith, not only is he a wonderful presenter, but, poor man, just minutes after we appointed him as interim superintendent and we took a break, I walked over to him and quietly said, "By the way, we need to meet because you and I are doing a presentation at MAB and we need to work this out." And he smiled and said, "Absolutely." And so, we presented on focus on St. Mary's, all children can and will learn, an innovative approach. It was a very successful presentation. And in fact, not only were very positive comments coming to us at the end of the session, but over the course of the next two days, people kept coming up to me or standing up in various forums and talking about our Fairlead program and Apex and what a wonderful job we were doing and not just what we were doing, but the effect it has on students. And for that, I'm very, very grateful. Also, had the opportunity to see and hear several other very interesting sessions. I was particularly interested in a breakout session that I went to on protecting student privacy. There are new guidelines coming down from the U.S. Department of Education and they have significant impact on all that we do. And I found it a very interesting session. So, I'd like to thank Mr. Smith because he did an outstanding job and did it on top of everything else that he is working on here. So, well done. And I'll also like to comment on the fact that at the President's Dinner Thursday evening, we honored Ms. Rochelle Eisenberg. She received, was the first ever recipient of the Dr. Carl Smith Excellence in Education Award, awarded to individuals who have not ever been a board member, but who have had significant positive impact on the education of students within the state of Maryland. Rochelle is a shining example of that. Her award has set the bar high for all who follow. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. My family and I, we just took a vacation, a fall vacation. We decided to go up into Garrett County, Washington County, West Virginia. Beautiful, leaves are turning on the trees, beautiful temperature. Had a good time. It's a good time to get away for about a week or so with your family and beautiful area, as most of you in this room know, because I know some of you in this room have been up in that part of the country. And it's very, very beautiful, very refreshing, very enjoyable. Mr. Smith, Superintendent Tennis report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Allen. It was a great opportunity up in Ocean City to talk about the incredible work of our teachers and our administrators and our central office staff and all of our support staff for what we do for kids and the fantastic results that we're seeing because of it. So, my pleasure to present that and certainly thank you, all board members, for continuing to do what you do so well, which is draw the attention of others to the great work that we're doing. I have a whole bunch of names to read. The first are the SMCPS Shoe Fund contributors for the month of September. We set up a PayPal site on the website, so we make it very easy for donations to come in. And then, we have also the traditional people sending them through the mail. But I'd like to thank Karen Beal, Francesca Fowler, Winifred Johnson, Viola Jones, Rebecca Loker, Kimberly Lutz, Jack Wiline, Jack Wilene, Jackie, we'll call you Jackie, Jackie Miller, Randy Tierra, Xena Wallish, and Ms. Mary Washington. So, thank you very much for the contributions to the Shoe Fund for the month of September. I have a very long list of Work Hard and Be Nice recipients for the month of September. This is really an institution in St. Mary's County. It is a fantastic opportunity for people to praise others for the work that they're doing above and beyond, and have such a significant impact on our school system. So, I'm going to read the names in alphabetical order. Stephanie Angle, Sarah Bucino, Gina Clark, Janine Craven, Cheryl Douglas, James Douglas, Wanda Duran, Melissa Evans, Sue Franklin, Tom Galligan, Sherry Godfrey, Kelly Hall, Debbie Harrison, Larry Hartwick, Eric Hatton, Brenda Hecker, Carolyn Hutchins, Kim Jordan, Peg Johnson, Brendelany, Trish Lee, Terry Liotti, Virginia Meadows, David Morris, Dina Osborne, Kimberly Powell, Cheryl Rayly, Joseph Rawlings, Catherine Robeson, Gary Robinson, Kelly Rocheck, Nancy Russell, Marilyn Savoy, Irv Smoot, the entire Spring Ridge Middle School staff. As we know, they're undergoing construction and it's going very well, but certainly when you have almost 1,000 children in a building under construction, it's much appreciated everybody's flexibility and patience. Nancy Russell, Marilyn Savoy, Irv Smoot, sorry, went back, Claire Van Beek, Sandy Varasco, Todd Whitlock, and Lori Wyman. All of them are the September 2014 Work Hard and Be Nice Award recipients. And I thank them for their fantastic service to students and to one another. The last thing I'd like to mention, I'd like to just pause for a moment to remember fantastic employee who we lost last month, Mr. Paul Rossi, who passed away in September after battling lung cancer. Paul had been in the system since 2005. He was our very first technology integrator, which meant he did everything he could to get technology in our classroom. And toward the end, he was installing SMART boards and working with teachers to calibrate them, to how they're going to use them. If you knew Paul, and pretty much everybody knew Paul, what a warm, generous, often really funny gentleman. He is sorely missed. He's survived by his wife, Mary, who works at Leonardtown Middle School in the media center. It's just lovely. But they also leave behind five children and 13 grandchildren. And so, just a wonderful man and a wonderful life lived. And I'd just like to take a moment, if we could, just to remember Mr. Rossi. And thank you, Dr. Rasper.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, moving along, recognitions. We'll begin with character education. Ms. Rhonda Harris?
Good morning, board members. Interim Superintendent, Mr. Smith. It's my privilege to be here this morning to recognize one of our schools for their efforts in the character education program. Here in St. Mary's County Public Schools, we do offer a comprehensive character education program for students kindergarten through grade 12. Character education supports a learning environment that fosters virtues such as caring, citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness. It is through the character education program that we reinforce positive character traits that will enable our students to be productive citizens on all economic and social levels in an increasingly diverse society. And as you can see, it is a part of our mission statement and it is embedded in all that we do. St. Mary's County Public Schools feels that it's very important that we educate our students with respect and positive relationships because we know that is the learning environment that entreats students, not only to bond with you, but to grow with you into their full potential. So, this year, we want to recognize Dinerd Elementary School in their being recognized as a recipient of the 2014 Maryland Center for Character Education School of the Year Award. And Megan Long, School Counselor of Dinerd Elementary School, is here with us to receive this reward.
Okay, next, under recognitions, we have National School Bus Safety Week, October 20th through the 24th. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Clements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
From the early morning hours to late at night, St. Mary's County School buses transport students to and from school on field trips, athletic trips, band trips, and a host of other activities. Our school buses travel approximately 23,000 miles a day and transport nearly 18,000 students in the morning to school and to home in the afternoon. For many of our students, they would not attend school if it weren't for school bus transportation. While school buses can be a little pricey and fuel can be expensive, it's the bus driver and the bus attendant who are the most valuable assets that we have and that make it all work. It is not easy being the bus driver or a bus attendant. They have to serve as a chauffeur, a nurse, referee, mediator, and a teacher. They have to remain professional, keeping an orderly environment, all while navigating safely along roadways, which sometimes are not so friendly to school bus drivers and school buses. It takes a special person to have all these traits, capable of handling the challenges, but still give that first warm smile at the beginning of the day and also at the end of the day. Today, we are here to promote school bus safety and recognize our excellent school bus drivers and our attendants for all that they do. National School Bus Safety Week is designated for the week of October 20th through October 24th, 2014. Wednesday, October 22nd is recognized or designated as School Bus Driver and Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County. A resolution is brought forth to recognize St. Mary's County Public School Bus drivers for their professionalism, dedication, and devotion to the safe transport of St. Mary's County Public School students. So, today with me, I have three special drivers and an attendant, part-time driver/attendant. So, let me introduce them real quick. We have Marilyn Savoy, who's a bus driver for Margaret Brown Middle School and also Benjamin Banneker Elementary School. Marilyn's been with us since 1991, so approximately 23 years of service. And she's fantastic, hardly ever hear many issues, just does a great job. We also have Ms. Nina Hunt, who's a special needs bus driver. She's been with us since September of 1984, so approximately 30 years of service with St. Mary's County Public Schools. She does a fantastic job and is a great school bus driver and the parents love her. We also have Stephanie Berry. Now, Stephanie Berry is a full-time attendant with St. Mary's County Public Schools, but she's also certified school bus driver. So, last year, she was extremely helpful when we had a couple buses of our own Board of Ed buses that had some driver situations where we needed a full-time driver replacement. And Stephanie was willing to step up to the plate and drove the bus for most of last year for those situations. And she did a fantastic job. So, today, I want to present a resolution to them, and I'll go ahead and read the resolution. This is, "Whereas the week of October 20th, 20th through the 24th, 2014, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation, and whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes Wednesday, October 22nd, 2014, as School Bus Driver and Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance. Signed, this 8th day of October, 2014, by the members of the Board of Education and Mr. Smith, Superintendent." So, now, I'll present the resolution.
We're going to take a break and, Mr. Smith, can we get some pictures?
Certainly.
And so, bus drivers, don't go away.
Don't go away.
Board will continue at this time. There's no public hearing today. Public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone just bear with me while I read the public comment statement. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. The Board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the Superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. The Board cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence their ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker and speakers may not yield their time to someone else. The Board encourages speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary, who will distribute copies to all Board members." Madam Secretary?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Mr. Smith?
Good morning.
This is my first board meeting with you. You've inherited me, I'm so sorry. Let's show the love, right? Well, I am here to talk about Back to Basics, sporting my new sweatshirt. Whereas the community attention and involvement is crucial to guarantee a world-class educational experience, I pledge to support Back to Basics. I pledge to conduct at least two face-to-face community conversations a week using information from a wallet card, which all of my members are going to receive, to inform and engage community members. I'll be wearing my Back to Basics in the future, on Fridays and whenever possible, outside of work. And I will continue to promote and participate in the Back to Basics campaign at my work site, which is everywhere in the county. So, Back to Basics is a consequence which is only reversible with community attention and involvement. It is the logical result of a county selecting the cheapest education in the state, although our county is fourth wealthiest in Maryland. Back to Basics is an outcome of the county public education funding being reduced from 51% when I first came here in 1988 to 37% at the current time. Back to Basics means that teachers are still giving 100% to their instruction, the most basic tenet of public education, but doing their best to say no to the extras. Back to Basics means that the luxuries of old are gone. Back to Basics means that as a result of cuts and freezes, class sizes have grown, some of them exceeding 30 students. Back to Basics means because of the significant cuts to materials of instruction for everything from science to art to music and everything in between, teachers have been having to supplement their students' needs from their own paychecks. But we're not going to do that anymore. Back to Basics means that many extra pay for extra duty programs will not, or contracts, rather, will not be accepted. Some of them have already been cut from the budget altogether. Back to Basics means the best and the brightest educators will pursue other employment opportunities where their contracts are not broken and their salaries are not frozen. Back to Basics is a choice made by the county officials that is wrong for students, wrong for children. And we ask the community and our elected officials here to direct other elected servants and to move themselves to pay for the first-class education that our 17,000-plus students deserve. Thank you.
Frank McCourt?
It was told a couple weeks ago that there would be a transparent accounting for the going-away party that was given to Dr. Marterano. We should expect that anytime soon? Dr. Asper, at all?
Mr. McCourt, that is available. Just have to do is request it. If you request it, see Mrs. Battle here before you leave today and she'd be more than happy to send it to you.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all, Dr. Mc.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan. Moving on, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Moving along, action items. The first action item today is the FY 2014 Audit Report. Mrs. McCourt?
Good morning, board members. You should have received by now a copy of the McLeodry Audit Financial Statements for 2014-- 2014. That is for the period which ended June 30th, 2014. The Board's Audit Committee met with McLeodry and reviewed the financial statements on September 23rd. The audited financial statements included the Commissioner's approval of the categorical budget adjustment that you approved, and the auditors have expressed an opinion that the financial statements of SMCPS fairly represent the financial condition of the school systems, and there were no findings noted. Many thanks to the Finance Department staff for their efforts, and specifically coordinators, Mr. Springer and Ms. Maline. Thank you. Are there any questions at this time?
Okay, questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
Several years ago, I was on the Audit Committee. I found it very interesting and helpful for me to understand greater specifics about this report. I noted in the report that, as we have been discussing all along, that there's great concern expressed over the fact that our fund balance has decreased to the level it has. There was also acknowledgement of the fact that we had not budgeted sufficient funds for healthcare previously, and the changes that we have implemented as a result of that budget decision. And I also appreciated the fact that the document also goes on to talk about the plans we have for increasing the, for rebuilding the fund balance, but also especially for rebuilding the line item that will allow us to cover a call for healthcare should that need arise. And so, the, I was also going back and comparing it to some years past, and I would like to sit down and understand a bit more about some of the explanations in last year's that speaks to, not issues so much as suggestions and things that were implemented in terms of booking various line items and who was doing that, how it's accomplished. I've expressed on several occasions over the years that I'm concerned about the fact that as we have cut personnel, and we have done so at central office, and we've not staffed things that some individuals might say are not directly classroom-related, they certainly are important in terms of maintaining facilities, and in this case, in making certain that we are in strictest compliance with federal and state laws, but especially making sure that from a financial standpoint, we are assured that what we're doing is meeting the needs that we have and covering our costs. And I continue to express concern. The Finance Office has done all they can to make sure that we are in compliance, and this report indicates that we are in compliance. Last year's report indicated we were in compliance. They have always done so. And the Board made decisions that turned out not to be, not to be our smartest move, pure and simple. And I appreciate that the report indicates that we are complying with government accounting rules, and that we are, we have good processes in place, but we just can't do it without the people. So, that's my soapbox statement for today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Mrs. Washington?
The financial report is a 70-page document, which has a lot of information in it, and I would like to share something that I think is very important. It's on page 13 of the report. It says factors bearing on the school system's future. All of these financial statements were prepared and audited, and it will affect our financial health in the future. One, the state of Maryland continued to struggle with its budget. Long-term economic health of the state will severely impact all school systems within Maryland. Two, Gatsby 45 requires St. Mary's County Public School to recognize the liability associated with post-employment benefits. This will add $9 million annually to our operating budget if fully funded. Presently, it's voluntary. Three, the cost of fossil fuel can rise at any time and can impact several areas of the budget, transportation and operations. The electric companies supplying electricity to the school system will increase rates dependent on the service provided and the usage. Four, the trend in healthcare costs is up. With the increase of additional members to the plan, the medical insurance expenditures will continue to grow as a percentage of the budget as a whole. Five, funding for the retirement of staff members currently enrolled in the teacher pension system is now being pushed back to the local school system, which started in fiscal year 2013. Materials of instruction, MOE, and other things will impact use for this new requirement, and it will be a burden for local school systems to fund. Six, SMCPS is returning to a modified retrospective healthcare plan, and it meant to be properly prepared for call position funds over the next several years will need to be earmarked for this potential. And lastly, St. Mary's County Public School has depleted its fund balance. To cover its 2014 operating costs, will need to build up its fund reserves to assist with cash flow and to be properly prepared for any unexpected expenses. What this tells me is the future does not look bright for us as far as the demands and heavy burdens that are placed on us to meet these just basic needs so that we can open the door. So in the future, we will have to get additional funding so that we can continue to be a highly performing school system, which can retain and retain quality educators, administrators, and support staff. And in the motion, as we always done, a copy of this report will go to the Board of County Commissioners. They have asked about our audit. This is given to them every year. Make sure this gets to all of the Commissioners so they can see our financial state and to see that we are in compliance with the government standards based on this type of audit that was done. So, I, we have a lot of financial challenges ahead. Thank you.
Dr. Asper, may I make one other comment, please?
Sure.
There's been a lot of press noting that different individuals believe that we should conduct a forensic audit. And so, I took the time to have a conversation with some accountants about that, and also did some additional research. What I was looking for as I read through all of this was an indication that a forensic audit would be called for. Forensic audit is necessary when there is an understanding that fraud has taken place. And I guess the suggestion is that somehow fraud took place with respect to the healthcare. We know where the money was utilized, rather than in healthcare. That doesn't come into question. Nowhere in this report does it suggest, in fact, just the opposite. They found no evidence of any fraud. Additionally, when you consider the cost of a forensic audit, it is not something to be undertaken lightly. In fact, some of the research I did indicated that if you believed you had a $20,000 fraudulent event, that it would cost in excess of $25,000 to identify, not to mention prosecute. And so, if, if, if I didn't understand where the money was utilized, if I had evidence that there was fraud that had taken place, it would have shown up more than likely in the years of audits that we've had. Not only has this audit just concluded, we also have a legislative audit that is ongoing as required by the state. That is legislation that went into place a number of years ago. This is the second time. They have cycled through St. Mary's County. The legislative audit goes on, I believe, for approximately six months in our county. It is very extensive. And again, we've had no indication that fraud has taken place, and I want the community to understand that. I certainly understand what my fiduciary responsibility is in terms of this school system and this budget. And I have, I have long spoken out over the fact that we received the budget documents later than we used to, and that has a great deal to do with the requirements of the Board of County Commissioners. They have a timeline they have to meet, and that back maps to us and impacts our timeline as well. And given that the Legislature does not finish their session until mid-April, it's often not into end of, not until the end of April that we have an understanding of what monies we will receive from the state, which makes developing a budget extremely difficult. And so, I just want people to understand that I don't simply cast off the idea of a forensic audit, but I don't believe that that is the best use of our limited funds. And I would say to the Commissioners, if they have evidence of fraud, and they believe this so distinctly, that I would invite them to provide the additional funding that it would require to conduct a forensic audit.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. Well, I was in on the exit audit conference, and thank you for bringing me on and filling me in. Could you take a minute and explain to everyone how this audit was in more detail than in previous years, because how they looked at more accounts because of previous?
Mr. Springer, may I ask you to come up here? Mr. Springer actually engages directly with our audit firm.
Right.
So I'd like to ask him to specifically address that question.
Certainly. This year, they audited 50 percent of all of our federal monies. So about 10 percent of our budget is federal, more or less, and the other piece is coming from the state and the county. So this year, normally we audit about 25 percent of our federal monies. This year, they audited 50 percent. Last year, they audited 50 percent. And next year will actually be 50 percent again, until we go back to 25 percent. That includes Title I, Title II, Title III, Special Ed, Medical Assistance, Impact Aid, and those types of programs that come from the federal agencies.
Because the auditors were explaining how they audited more and how wonderful the job we've done with fewer people doing the work.
Yes, that is correct.
So I just definitely want to reach out and point that out, that you all have done a fantastic job. I know we're squeezing six cents out of every nickel, so to speak, to make things work, but you all did a great job. The auditors were very happy with all the findings, and thank you.
Just to piggyback on this a little bit, Mr. Springer, Mrs. McCourt, would you just tell the community how many audits the school system has been involved in for the past couple of years?
Well, to piggyback on what Ms. Allen was saying, in addition to your independent audit firm, we have the legislative auditors, but we also have MSD that comes in and performs multiple audits during the course of the year of the various departments and the financial aspects and the individual operations of the departments.
Okay, so this is all ongoing?
Absolutely.
This doesn't happen, you know, in two weeks? I mean, this goes on most of the year.
The independent audit is a requirement under COMAR annually to be conducted, and then the findings and the results of the financial statements are required annually to be provided to the Board of County Commissioners to be included in their financial statements as a component unit of the government, and then are also required to be submitted to MSD.
Right, and the State Board of Education also receives this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
The MSD auditors come out every two years.
Every two years, yeah.
Yeah, the independents every year. Right now, the legislative is every six years, and then we have audits from every agency that we receive funding from, say like Title I, Title II, Head Start. A lot of those are annually.
Those are independent audits?
Yeah, those are, we call them programmatic audits because they just audit that particular program. There was one year I was involved with seven audits in one 12-month span.
Seven audits.
When I was working with the grants.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Mrs. Crosby?
Complicated.
Yes, it is.
It's very complicated. When I was out here, the Board was in their meeting to decide if I was guilty of an ethics charge, and I was determined not guilty. It was what I call another irritation charge. I talked to Mr. Norris, and Mr. Norris, who everybody loved when he made his case, all of a sudden fell into disrepute because of the audit. I don't believe he did as bad as people are saying he did. We were five, I said, what is the problem? He says 5.8 to 6.2 million in debt. All of a sudden, it's gone. This is hard for a layperson like me to understand why. You're in there, and then you start reading the reasons. All you have to do is read the front of the budget book. Women had babies, it snowed too much, this and that and the other thing, and I'm not an auditor, I will say that. That's why, when you read all that, you say, well, what in the world is a real reason? Then you start talking to people, and you get other things. That supposedly Mr. Norris took an extra 5 million out of the capital, and then it went back over into the operator where he was. That's why you would do an audit. It would be where they, I've been told that a forensic audit, I'm not an auditor, you are, Ms. McCourt, you've drilled down more, but it sounds like we did drill down more this time, correct?
Yes, the auditors did drill down more, in particular in the area of the federal grants.
Okay, that's what we did, and there's more to be looked at, correct, on this whole thing? But it is hard for, I'm really on this issue, except for balancing my checkbook, which might be a problem at times. I'm a layperson. I also looked at that retrospective idea, because we went from, tell me if I'm right, we went from retrospective to PEGO, is that correct?
We went from a modified retrospective plan to a PEGO plan in 2013 and 2014.
Then we came back to retrospective.
And we're back on a modified retrospective.
Now, you know, it'd be helpful, I think, would be to, I think I understand retrospective. Would you explain that, please, because that's what we're on now?
Modified retrospective plan, the healthcare provider provides you an estimated cost for the upcoming fiscal year. You pay that out on a monthly basis, and then at the end of the fiscal year, they provide you a settlement. And that settlement can go up to a 5 percent over and above what they originally projected your cost to be for that particular year.
Okay, that sounds good, by the way. I don't, I know the county, one county commissioner is calling for a forensic audit. That, end of that, I'll just keep reading the paper, because here's another question. STEM, that's just one example. Just to take a child from their home school by bus with the, you brought it up here, fossil fuel, costs money, and we've got, what, how many pathways do we have now? A lot of them. Now, I would hate like heck to see these things collapse, because we don't have enough money. The only thing, my only suggestion would be to try to have them in all the schools. I know, and I'm going to say it, that STEM got put in Great Mills, Lexington Park, and Spring Ridge to bring up the scores, and they did come up, because those children in those schools are very smart children. We cannot let these, we have got to come up, be proactive, proactive, which would mean, what are we going to do ahead of time for these children who are in these schools? And I'm not just talking because of my granddaughter. She loves it. She loves it, but we need to come up with a proactive solution to a collapse that's a monetary collapse. The other thing is, I was told $4 million. I said, "How in the heck did we have $6 million in debt?" And all of a sudden, we've got it down to 500 and some thousand. Mary and I, Mrs. Washington and I, were upstairs where the auditing's done, and they -- remember when we went down from first we paid this, and we took a million out of fund balance, then we did this, okay? And I couldn't understand how it went up. It took a while to go up, and then all of a sudden, we were up there to 6.2, but it seems like it came down so fast. I'm just saying, what are we going to do if all of a sudden the fossil fuels go up? What are we going to do for these children in these schools? Should we start planning now to not have any money? That's -- there you go. I cut to the chase, because it could happen.
So if I could direct you to page 45 of the audit of financial statements.
Yes.
I'd like to start by speaking to the budgetary deficit that we did face last fiscal year with respect to the healthcare.
Yes, I hear you.
And within that, you'll see the results of the approved categorical budget adjustment, and that was that we originally planned to spend $2.5 million of fund balance, and we ended up spending $1 million of the insurance call and $4.2 million of the unassigned fund balance. So we certainly had a need to dive into our fund balance to utilize that to cover the insurance costs for FY '14. And that brings me back to Mrs. Allen and your statement that we are in a much different position at the end of FY 2014 with respect to our fund balance. And if you look at page 34 of the document, what you'll see is that our unassigned fund balance is now at $480,000. That was in the millions of dollars as of the end of 2013.
And you have consistently shared with us publicly how we got through and addressed the issues that we faced in terms of finding a way to cover the healthcare costs, and we did so through position freezes, a number of different ways. And the board, the entire board, has been briefed on that through various presentations that you've done. So I don't want anyone to think that this is somehow a surprise. It is not.
Well, Mrs. McCourt has told me that she would do Finance 101 for us.
Absolutely, anytime you'd like.
And that would -- I think it would be very, very helpful, because here we are, like I said, I was out here, and we were 5.8 to 6.2 million, I believe, Mr. Norris. I said, "How come?" I might as well add this. You get up there every -- you're going to get up in a few minutes, I believe, with this, and tell us how we are. And then all of a sudden, it's bingo. And he said, "Oh, the bills just came in." And I thought, "The bills just came in?" You understand. Well, even a layperson says, "The bills just came in. We had this much, and bingo." Can you address that statement, "The bills just came in"? They don't all come in at once, do they?
The health insurance bills are coming in on a monthly basis, ma'am.
And we should see it going down like that, not bingo like that, shouldn't we?
Yes.
I'm not trying to say anything bad about Mr. Norris, but I'm saying something bad, but thank you. Thank you. And I'm not the accountant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Serena?
I don't have any comments or questions.
Are you sure, Serena, you don't have any questions?
I don't know if you want to get in on this one, sweetie.
The look on your face told me you had questions.
You need to get in on it. Yes.
Mrs. McCourt, thank you very much. Mr. Springer, the entire staff. And the school system continues to be audited on a regular basis by several organizations, including the state of Maryland, as we all know. All these audits are available. It's nothing new. We are going into a time when funding obviously is not going to be where it needs to be. The school system, as everyone in our community knows, is underfunded, and we maintain a number-one school system. We all know this, and everybody wants one. We don't produce money. We don't have, you know, printing presses where we, like the government does, when they need money, they, you know, run off billions of dollars. We can't do that. We depend on funding from the county and the state and partially from the federal government. And to continue where we are, and we've all said this over and over again, and I've said it in previous meetings and interviews, it's nothing new. The school system is underfunded, and it's going to be very, very difficult to continue maintaining our level of expertise with the funding that we have. Hopefully, looking towards the future, that more funding will be available, that the government will do a better job in appropriations. Our state will have increased funding, and in turn, so will our county, and therefore, our budgets hopefully will be increased in order to continue with our programs and all our pathways, as Mrs. Crosby talks about. 18,000 students, there's a lot of students in the school system. And St. Mary's County public school system, as we all know, has really grown. I mean, there was a time when Great Mills High School had nine teachers, okay? Now look where it is. Look where Leonard Town is. Look where Chopticon is. We were talking about Evergreen Elementary School this morning. Mr. Smith, we've got 1,000 students over there, okay?
700. Just under 800.
Yeah. The kids keep coming. We're talking about building new school. We're worried about land for a new high school, land for additional elementary schools. All this takes funding. We all know that. So we want to keep this in perspective as we continue thinking about budgets, because the school system needs everyone's help in the community in order to continue with what the people want when it comes to the school system.
As a point of clarification and in an effort to promote transparency, are all our audits sent over to the Board of County Commissioners? And if so, maybe we should, so we can let them know that it's open, they can see all of our audits.
The independent audit by Mick Ladry is always sent over to the Board of County Commissioners, and that is the audit that they utilize within their financial statements as well, because we are reported as a component unit of them. The Legislative Services Audit, I don't know if it was previously submitted over there or not, but it's certainly available online.
I think we could make an effort to send it over to them.
Certainly not a problem.
And say, "Go to the Board of Education's website online to see it."
Absolutely.
As a courtesy to them and out of respect to our funding agents, to make sure our audits are sent there. Do you have a --
Mrs. Washington, I completely support that. I concur with you completely. I am meeting with Dr. Bridgette monthly, and we're going through and any information. The biggest -- where we want to be is any question asked deserves an answer, and I know that Mrs. McCourt and myself, we are dedicated to make sure that there is no unanswered question. So if there's a legitimate inquiry about any of our financials, we would certainly make that completely disclosed. I share with Ms. Allen her concerns. Conversations of forensic audit, I know how taxing audits are generally upon staff, but whatever needs to be done to make people feel comfortable and confident in the decision-making of the Board of Education on behalf of children, we will certainly enter into. The biggest thing, when, Mrs. Crosby, you know, we talk about pathways and opportunities for children, I shudder at the thought of ever taking something away from a child. Regardless of the machinations of the adults and the back and forth, I don't ever want to sacrifice something from a child. They only get -- you only get one senior year, and so you better have the best senior year that you can have. I can't recreate that. So we will continue to do everything we can to answer any questions so that we have a productive and transparent process through, so that we don't take anything away from our children. We continue to build on what we've already given them.
And your contract is online.
Yeah, everything about me is online, and if there's an unanswered question, just ask me. I'm more than comfortable sharing.
Put a map to his house.
Please do. When I originally posted it, yes, I did have my address and home phone number on it. We did take that off. I don't necessarily need visitors, although you're more than welcome if you do find your way there.
Oh, no. With our Back to Basics T-shirt.
So thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Board members, is this an action item? We need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accepts the audit report as presented. Upon receipt, the printed version of the audit will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for St. Mary's County, state and federal authorities. It will also be available at the public libraries in St. Mary's County.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Information items? Mrs. McCourt, you're up again. FY 2015, September financial report.
The financial report in front of you is for the month of September. The original budget was adopted at $194.6 million. Revenues received year-to-date, $54 million. Everything is tracking right on target as expected.
On the expenditure side, there is particular concern that I'd like to bring to your attention in the area of transfers, and this is for out-of-county and non-public transfers for special education. Based on our current projections and encumbrances, and these are encumbrances for students currently placed, and that we've gone ahead and projected what their costs will be for the remainder of the school year, we're estimating that that will exceed budget by $207,000. At this point, there's sufficient funds within the category, in particular in the area of salaries and wages savings and some sub-costs that haven't been expensed as of this time. However, we do anticipate a budget transfer will be necessary, categorical, and propose bringing that to you in the month of December.
Can we -- at one time, we did rolling agendas and so that we could kind of anticipate, we make sure that that particular item is noted now within an agenda so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle of changeover of board and so forth? I just think maybe...
Certainly. We'll make sure that it's included on the October, November, and December financial reports as well until that budget adjustment has been made.
Thank you.
One other area of note is insurance workers' comp. That increases as a result of the increase in experience rating. At this time, we feel that there's sufficient funds within that category to cover that cost, and we'll be doing an internal budget adjustment for that within this next month. Are there any other questions with respect to the September financials?
Board members, comments, questions? Mrs. Allen?
Not with respect to these two items. You have another document that I think you're going to go over that I have some questions on.
That document was provided for informational purposes, but I can certainly address any questions that you have.
Okay. Within that, there was an indication that in order to -- let me just kind of pull this down here. In order to cover some mid-level administration equipment leasing and technology to software-hardware maintenance, that we've taken $110,000 from advanced placement testing and moved that to equipment leasing. I would like to understand, I know we have changed the way we're paying for AP testing. We did that a couple of years ago, wherein previously, we paid all funds for those tests. Now, students pay, and then we reimburse if they score a three or better on the AP test. So because of the way we do our budget, there's not necessarily a line item within the budget document that indicates how much money we have budgeted for AP testing. My question is...
I've got it right here.
The money that has been reprogrammed here or is proposing to be -- has been reprogrammed, how will that impact our ability to pay for any tests three and above? Will there be sufficient funds based on historic trends of what we've been paying?
And if I may, this was one of the conversations that we've had. There is an absolute real cost that the system needs to carry. When we originally, the former superintendent, when we built the budget for 2014, '15, there was not the expense of Apex Learning built into the budget. It's a $100,000-plus cost. That cost has to come from somewhere. To make sure that we could initiate the contract, we went into the budget line, this for that, and we identified the AP reimbursement funds. The AP reimbursement funds are a lagging cost, so we have paid all of the children who sat for exams last year, the last bills of which that were processed were September 30th. We have to reconcile that account to see how much money we have left over, the previous year, leftover additional funds. Ultimately, what I'll do is I'll bring back to the board in the next month or so how much money we may have and what would be the opportunity to reimburse students for their performance on AP tests. Each year, that number goes up and down. We are blessed in that we have more children than ever taking AP courses and sitting for the exam, but in the short term, we had to carry forth the cost of Apex. We, within the categories, will be able to compensate students. It's just a question of the process by which we do so.
And I just want to let you know again that I really like this detailed explanation of utilization of funds. It helps me better understand the budget at a deeper level, so thank you for...
Certainly, and that document is put out there for public view to allow for an increase in transparency, and it is also shared with the Board of County Commissioners.
I knew that it was shared with the Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate that, and it's one of the reasons I like board docs so much, is that people can go back to previous meetings, they can take a look at the documents that we're looking at, and I think that helps people understand more, so thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
There are questions. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Crosby?
No, thank you.
Serena?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Mrs. McCourt, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to future board meetings. The next regular board meeting will be on October 29, 2014 at 5:30 p.m. Before we adjourn this meeting, I'll remind the board that we have a work session immediately following this meeting on Section L policies, first reading with Dr. Marr. This meeting is adjourned.